We're ready, Freddy.
Let's do it.
I'll call the meeting to order while everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vacation this evening will be given by, guess the second word, city council member?
Good evening, everyone. What I would like to do, I just, I know we just had Memorial Day, so I just, being a veteran, twenty-three years in the service, I'd just like to thank everyone and hope you can continue the dedication we had yesterday for all the servicemen and women, for all the sacrifice they have given throughout the years, all the sacrifice their family has given throughout the years, not only to men and women in service, but also men and women in uniform in police and fire too. So I'd just like for you to take a moment and reflect on all the military services. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. Clerk will take the role.
Mayor Gilby?
Yep.
Member Robinson?
President.
Councilmember Dancy?
Yep.
Councilmember Alexander?
President.
Councilmember Pappen?
Here.
Councilmember Heck?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
We're all here. Need a motion to, well, I'll move to adopt the agenda as presented. I brought an additional item, item eleven F. Apologize for the lateness. We're busy finishing portions of it today, but I'd like to submit that for consideration and discussion as item eleven F.
We do get to know what...
Support.
And the resolution is regarding some transparency items and some discussion over our open data portal. Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any further amendments discussion? Hearing on...
I'm sorry, to the agenda or to, are we voting on this first?
Just to the adoption of the agenda.
No, on the adoption of the agenda, yes. I have another. On item ten C, I believe that we did vote last time to postpone this to a date certain, however, we also asked for a legal opinion and there's reason that this should take place as an executive session. I don't know if that was the intent here, but since there are legal matters at hand, I would move to make this at least to start in an executive session.
Scheduling an...
I would support that.
Scheduling executive session before ten C?
Well, yeah, and to... Not for item ten C.
So would you say to move ten C to be item twelve B?
Okay, so there's an A and a B to twelve.
This creates the B.
And I also would like to add, what I guess would be eleven G. It's just a simple motion for a traffic study at the corner of Elmwood and Wisner, and I can talk more about that if I can get a second.
I'll support that.
That was going to be eleven.
It'll be eleven G since we, if, what?
At Elmwood and Wisner?
Yeah.
All right. Consider all those friendly amendments to my original motion. So, motion is to add item eleven F
Okay.
For resolution on transparency and open data, eleven G for the traffic study on Elmwood and Wisner, and to move ten C to after the executive session forming twelve B. Okay?
Support.
Hearing no further amendments, oh, and no further discussion. I'll call for the vote on all those items and for the final adoption of the budget.
What do you mean?
Final adoption of the agenda.
Real slick there.
The budget is passed unanimously.
Yeah.
Agenda is adopted unanimously. All right, on to presentations and proclamations. Five A, Director of Police and Fire Services, Omar Hip, will give a presentation regarding group violence intervention and gun violence strategy. Mr. Hip, the floor is yours. I'm not sure if we have a walking mic. Oh, you have it. Thank you.
Well, good, what I'm handing out to you really isn't necessarily for you to refer to during the presentation. It's straight off the National Network's website. Some of you may have seen this. It's just a brief on what the GVI program is. To start, just giving you a little background on what got us here today before we even get to the first slide, a little before, a year ago, actually early 2018, through work with our LPAC group in Jackson, the Advocates and Leaders of Police Community Trust, we began initially, that group began looking at group violence intervention. We brought over a representative from the city of Kalamazoo, Deputy Chief Dave Boyson with Kalamazoo Public Safety Department. He gave a presentation to our LPAC group on what they do in Kalamazoo. We followed that up. We visited Detroit, their Project Ceasefire, and attended one of their community call-in meetings, which I'll talk a little more, what the call-in is here in a little bit. And we also visited Kalamazoo, actually went to Kalamazoo as well, and did some follow-up, looking into the way they, their model and what they do in Kalamazoo. Both Detroit and Kalamazoo have partnered with the National Network for Safe Communities. That's through the John J. College School of Criminal Justice out of New York, and that's basically what I'm going to be proposing tonight as well, that I think we move in that direction as well. So, getting into the presentation, group violence intervention, I'm going to refer to through the presentation, is GVI. I'm going to breeze through this. It's about ten minutes long, and probably have an opportunity for some questions at the end, but kind of the premise of group violence intervention in especially urban communities throughout the country, statistically, it shows that the high majority of violent crime is committed by a very small number of that population. Some of the statistics that the National Network provides, nationally, one of the stats they have is half percent of a city's population contributes to seventy percent of the gun violence in a community. And I'll show you a number here in a little bit, based off an initial preliminary study or analysis that they've conducted for us here in Jackson. Our numbers aren't quite that high there, but you'll see what they are, but I preface that with saying that's their preliminary findings. They're in the process of doing additional data analysis and crunching those numbers down further. So they gave a very conservative number in their preliminary results to us. Just a little on group violence or GVI, group violence intervention. Quite often hear about gang activity or gang wars or turf wars, you know, violence over guns. Luckily speaking, across the country, that's not necessarily what we're seeing, especially in communities the size of Jackson. Many of these disputes, and we know this, I know this from the type of incidents we handle, are over personal beefs. Someone in their family has slighted, boyfriend-girlfriend issue, and the retaliation back and forth between the group members continues. And it's that street code, the peer pressure to retaliate, you're not going to be, you're not going to disrespect me or my group, and we're going to retaliate against you. And we know through our own intelligence within the Jackson Police Department, also the initial problem analysis conducted by the National Network, that that is what we're seeing here in much of our group violence in the city of Jackson. When you hear in the city, what group, it could be groups really synonymous with gang, cliques, posse, sets, crews. There's a lot of slang terms that covers what a gang is or what a group is. But really, it's any network. It could be as small as two people. We're not seeing that in Jackson. Most of our groups are a little larger than that, but it's just a social network whose members commit violent crime. And there are, of course, national, you know, gangs, chapters of gangs across the country in Jackson. We have some subsense of some of those major gangs, but for the most part, we have local, small street groups here in the city of Jackson. Looking at ground on National Network for Safe Communities and their involvement with GVI, they really, National Network started looking at group violence intervention and launched it in 2009 under David Kennedy, who is still the director there, and Jeremy Travis, it was the gentleman's name. And group, the GVI concept really started in the city of Boston prior to that timeframe, back in the early nineties. So GVI, the concept has been around longer than what National Network has been in charge of it and spearheading it through communities across the country. So through guiding principles, number one, the message is not just from law enforcement, but from the community is do harm, do not shoot each other. That's our number one goal, is to reduce the number of shootings so that people are not being shot. It's pretty simple, but that is a core concept of it. But strengthen our community's capacity to prevent violence, and you'll see when I get into the, what the model actually does, you'll see how that does strengthen the community's response to it. Enhance legitimacy, and that's really enhancing the legitimacy of law enforcement. So, giving the community that trust in law enforcement and enhancing our legitimacy and our role in preventing violence, all in help to those that want it. So our group members, there are people in our groups who will take the help if it is offered to them, so that is a key component of this concept. It's not just law enforcement, it incorporates community members, community organizations to offer that help if someone chooses to take it. Get deterrence right, so deterring that violent behavior, and there are specific things in the program that are aimed at getting that deterrence right, and using enforcement strategically. Jackson's small enough where it's pretty easy actually for us to identify our hotspots or our violent areas at any given point in time. We do a good job of tracking statistics in our number of shots fired, our number of shooting incidents, and I'll talk a little bit more about what I mean by a shooting incident. But strategically, placing enforcement in those areas to address the violent offenders and the violent areas. Now, the violent areas, what does gun violence look like in Jackson? So this next slide will give you kind of some of the background to the stats. I'm going to show you on the next slide, but when we're going to show you a confirmed shooter, for the purposes of this presentation, it's where there is a victim either shot, that is struck by gunfire, a victim who identifies that they were shot at, or is it a scene where we find evidence of a shooting. So we find casings on the ground, we find a house that has a bullet hole in it, a vehicle that was shot. So those are what I'm referring to as confirmed shootings when we do the next slide. Shot, when we, these are calls, we get a call, the shots fired, and the next presentation is going to talk about that a little bit too, but we're going to shot fired called, but absolutely no evidence. We don't have a witness to corroborate it. We don't have a victim, obviously. We find no evidence at the scene, either of physical evidence in terms of a casing or any property damage to confirm that it was in fact a gunshot. Threat, gunshot. That's when somebody reports that somebody pointed a gun at them and threatened them with it, or threatened them in some manner with a weapon, with a gun, not a weapon, with a gun, but no actual shot was fired. And then I'll have some stats here just on offenses for carrying a concealed weapon. So these are calls for a 911 call that leads to a charge of carrying a concealed weapon. So officers get dispatched, they arrive on scene, through the investigation, they actually charge someone with a weapons offense. So the next slide, with a weapon, over the last three years, and I just ran it through the end of eighteen, the victim ran it through, slide end of this is probably the most important, probably the one that is up there. In sixteen, we had seventy-one confirmed shootings. So again, remember, those are called bullet-to-body shootings, so where someone was struck with a bullet, or evidence of a shooting, or a house or vehicle damage, or something along those lines. So it went up eighty, 2018, at year's end, we were up to one hundred and twenty-four confirmed shootings. Don't, exact answer for your reason why it jumped that much, because if you look at the shots fired calls, they're actually down since 2016, pretty considerably, and then even the threatened with a gun calls are down a little bit from last year. But those confirmed shootings were up significantly at the end of, end of eighteen. I will say through beginning of January to current date, we're down as compared to last year, so, and we've implemented some new things that we're doing within the department that I think is a reason for that. But, and then the carrying concealed weapons, you'll see our offenses went up as well in terms of that. We go to the next slide, give you some idea who's affected. These are gunshot victims, so someone that is struck by gunfire. You know, actual victims are down. I mean, you'll see in sixteen, we had thirty-five who were actually struck by gunfire, down to twenty-two at the end of 2018, so that number fluctuates. I mean, the confirmed shootings you saw were up considerably, but the number of those actually struck by gunfire were down pretty significantly as compared to two years ago at the end of eighteen. The National Network's initial analysis that they conducted, and a lit background, so council's aware, four members from the National Network came to Jackson the beginning of March and conducted three days, they were here for three days, and did a problem analysis, and what they did is looked at the number of bullet-to-body shootings for the last five years and our homicides for the last three years, and they met over those three days. The first full day was with law enforcement. We had local, county, state, federal, FBI, ATF, DEA, prosecutor's office, US Attorney's Office. We had a lot of people in the room that full day that went through the analysis of the last five years worth of bullet-to-body and the last three years of homicides. And their initial findings, in addition to the full day, they met with a couple of community groups when they were here in town, and they gave a presentation to some city staff when they were here. But their initial findings show that point four percent of, again, based upon their analysis, of Jackson's population associated with fifty percent of homicides and the non-fatal shootings that they analyzed. And again, that's in their initial report, they indicated in there that is a conservative number. They would expect that to actually go up more when the full analysis is done in the coming month or so. But not just the victims, but also what about the families involved, the neighbors, the friends, the people in the neighborhoods, the businesses, which is on there, people who work in the areas, live, the people that live there. And what I often forget about is the medical professionals who are treating the medical people in the hospital, not just cost, but the trauma of dealing with gunshot victims, and the officers, first responders, firefighters, paramedics that also respond to these calls regularly. You can jump. These are some, and it is cited down in the bottom at the very end of this presentation, there's a bibliography that lists the sites in more detail, but Health Affairs, volume thirty-six, number ten, tip, gunshot victim through this study analysis done, five thousand dollars in the emergency room, hospital stay resulting from gunshot could cost up to a hundred thousand dollars. Great, forty percent of gunshot victims don't have health insurance, and the last slide there, two point eight billion is spent annually on gun-related injuries. Again, that information can be found in the Health Affairs Journal. Health Affairs Journal. Does economic downturns, does the presence of gun violence in the neighborhood hold back business growth? The next slide will kind of cover that. Again, Urban Institute did a study. Again, Urban Institute did a study. This is a few years old, effect of gun violence on local economies. They looked at some, obviously, these are large cities, large communities compared to Jackson, but Oakland, California, Minneapolis, and Washington DC. In OC, related homicide, their study showed there were five fewer jobs the following year. In Washington, every gun-related homicide in a year, two fewer retail service establishments opened up the following year. With only 10 fewer related homicides in a year, Washington DC, there were 20 homicide jobs the following year, $1.3 million increase in sales, and one fewer businesses closing, or one fewer businesses closing their doors. Obviously, there's other filings that go into it, but again, I would refer you to the Urban Institute to read that. Read that. Side in a year, Minneapolis, 80 new jobs the following year, 9.5 million increase in So, GVI, just another program. This question I'm sure many people have. I can tell you, I'm sure, Jackson, for 23 years, we've never had a specific program aimed at dealing with gun violence. I think it's time, and I think GVI is a good option for us. What it involved for us, enforcement, I touched on that, community members have a huge part in this. There's an executive committee that kind of oversees GVI, and that would be made up of community members, law enforcement, and social services sector. The focus, reduce serious violence arrests and incarcerations. Obviously, we reduce the number of shootings. In turn, that is going to reduce the number of arrests that are made for it, because we're not going to have the number of offenses being created or caused. And in turn, the incarcerations for those offenses would be down. Strengthen disadvantaged communities assists us, and I talked about this a little with, as far as building legitimacy, but reset relationships between community and law enforcement. And the last one, operate within existing resources. And we'll talk about that a little bit more here in a bit, the existing resources. How does it work? The key components to really the law enforcement side of things, but weekly crime reduction meetings. I'll tell you, we began doing those about four or five months ago, through some of the GVI stuff that we've been looking at. Group, this is where National Network assists us tremendously in conducting audits of our known groups that are out there committing the violent acts. Prosecuted shoots, it's common, especially for very large agencies, where they just don't have the resources to follow up on every single shooting, especially when the victim is uncooperative, does not want to prosecute. You don't have witnesses that are willing to come forward and give information on what occurred. But a big piece, even if you have those cases, making it a point to follow up on all of those shootings in one way or another. Targeting the violent offenders. We have started doing that. We know who the large majority of our violent offenders are here in Jackson. We do work with state and federal partners regarding prosecution. So law enforcement is a key piece of this still. That's just a component of GVI. That is actually going out, law enforcement, community member, and a social services member, kind of a three-person team, and making face-to-face contacts with those involved in violent crime, and putting them on notice. They get an official letter, it would probably be on city letterhead or police department letterhead, putting them on notice that we know they're involved in group activity and we're aware of what's going on, and if it continues, we will be making them a priority. And the community calling, and that's a component, something when I attended Detroit's calling, that's where they had probably 30 known group members from the city of Detroit come in. It was at a church in Detroit, and they were all either on probation, parole, bond release, something where they could be mandated to show up to this calling. So it was a condition of their parole probation, that you will show up for this. If you don't, you'll be violated, and you could go to jail. But that, they came into the room, they were addressed by the mayor of Detroit, the police chief, a former gang member who was killed, a father, a former gang member himself, probably six or seven different speakers that addressed the group. It was a one-way message. It was sit there and listen. We're going to give you our message that we do not tolerate this type of activity, and that if it continues, we will make it a priority to come after you and your group. Following the one-way message, they actually had a sit-down dinner, and there are all kinds of social service providers in the room that were able to interact and offer some of the services that they had. One thing Detroit has, they actually have a 1-800 number, where a group member can pick up the phone anytime and get somebody that answers the other end of that phone for options or resources that may be available to help this person if they're at a point where they're willing to reach out to try to do something different. Who do we need to do table from law enforcement? I'll tell you right now, we already have these people at the table, sheriff's office, all police agencies in Jackson County, the state police, our federal partners, ATF, DEA, FBI, district attorney's office, probation, parole, all those people are currently at the table and come to our weekly crime reduction meeting. Next, community, next, involves the families, ex-offenders, former members, faith leaders, survivors of violence, and you could go on and on in terms of the community members involved. And our social services, some of them, trauma care, outreach, education, employment, all those services, social service providers in the county would be an important piece of this strategy. Just some success stories to share with you. This is stuff that the National Network puts out. This is actually right out of that, the brief that I just gave you, as it's cited on the bottom there. Boston, Massachusetts, 63% reduction in youth homicides. New Haven, Connecticut, 73% reduction in monthly shootings. Stockton, California, 42% reduction in homicides. New Orleans, and I could continue to read to you, but that's some of the stats that are out there. Some idea. Kalamazoo, in 2014, which is right around the time they implemented GVI, they had 47 bullet-to-body shootings, 18 of those being group members involved. And in 2017, which, about a year ago, when I started talking to Kalamazoo, that's the most up-to-date stats they had, they had 18 bullet-to-body shootings and 17 with seven of those being group member involved. One thing I do think's important, or counsel to understand, Kalamazoo did initially try to implement GVI on their own, and they, Dave was pretty honest with me, he said they failed at it. So then they decided to contract with the National Network. They signed on with a three-year contract with the National Network, which is now concluded, and they do feel they have it under control now and are doing it the right way. And at this point, they don't see a continuing need for them to continue to partner in a contractual basis with the National Network. Okay? So what about Jackson? The next slide, just give you the information on what we're talking about cost-wise. Your program, and this is an updated quote I just got from them about two weeks ago. I do think it's important, initially, a year ago, a little, about a year ago when I got the first quote from the National Network, it was about 315,000 for the two-year contract. And through working with them, and honestly, someone, I think, because we've been looking at it, I think seriously, they know we're seriously looking at this, I was able to work with them and shave down some of the pieces in the initial proposal that they didn't think was an absolute must, and that I didn't, I agree, that I didn't think we necessarily need to have right off the bat. And they've got that cost down really pretty significantly. Is it still a pretty significant? Yeah, it is still a lot of money. There's no secret about it. But year one, I'll see, go back to that, Jonathan, 105,000, just over. The year-two cost would be 81,000. These payments are made in quarterly installments. We would have to sign a contract after July 1, and we'd be bound by the contract. Project manager cost I put in there, that's addition, in addition to those numbers up top. They really express, not only in their proposal, but in their literature, that there is a project manager who is assigned to this project on a daily basis. That is their job. So I'm proposing that cost, and we looked at that for salary and benefits for a new hire to be deemed a project manager.
Before you kind of reference some of the outside entities that you've worked with in terms of supporting this project with outside funds, foundations, and things like that?
We have, first of all, back in the fall, September-ish, the last round of community grants put out by the Jackson Community Foundation, we applied for one, we were awarded the full amount. The maximum was 20,000. They actually gave us all 20,000. And that cost went to the problem analysis that we had done when they were here, when the network came to town for the three days that I mentioned. So that 20,000 plus, we matched that with 15,000 out of our general fund to do that problem analysis. So that was 20,000 there that we were able to leverage, but we have, I have had continued talks with the foundation about potentially additional support from some funders. No guarantees on that at this point, but it is still something Monica and I are talking Next slide. These are some of the things that include in the full, you know, in the proposal they made to us, but them coming here, introducing the framework to the local leaders and the executive team that would be formed, the workshops and trainings that are provided. One big piece, they provide the training to the project manager. That is a big part of their initial service. But guidance, expert advice, the management infrastructure of the program, dynamics, organizing, things such as the call-ins and the custom notifications and all those things. Early on, they assist with doing it, getting you to do it the right way. There are trips to actually go to some other communities that are, have implemented GVI across the country. That's some of the big costs I cut out of the proposal from them, and that they did cut out of their proposal to get that number down. Enhancements that could be put in place, ShotSpotter potentially could be one of those enhancements to the model down the road, or whatever council decides. Pursuing our reconciliation measures, immediate relations, you know, policy implementations in the beginning, administrative logistical support, talking with kind of the main representative from National Network. It sounds like in the beginning, they are on the phone almost daily with the project manager on getting things in place and getting this up and running. So I think that was the final slide in terms of these things. There's the sources that I mentioned are at the end, and that wraps up the presentation.
Chief, any questions from the council?
Would the project manager be somebody that we're hiring in addition to who's already on staff? Is that a police officer? Can you tell us more about that position?
That is addition to somebody already on staff. No, that is not a police officer cost. Our discussions with, that would be a non-union position, civilian position. It could be a retired police officer potentially, or it could be someone in the, with a social work background. I will say, the starting salary for that position isn't real high. So we've even had some discussion with the National Network, could you fill that with a part-timer? So pay them more hourly, but it would just be a part-time position, but it would potentially get you around the same cost of that 75,000.
Does that number includes all the benefits?
Well, part, yes. Yeah, that number is, for the new, a new full-time hire, yes, that is salary plus benefits for the non-union position, starting at the level that that 75,000 would start someone at.
Thank you, Omar. Any other questions from council? Next, we have item 5B, presentation by Tommy Blackwell regarding proposal for City Jackson's ShotSpotter.
Good evening, and thank you.
I think there's, I think there's a walking mic. Oh, there it is.
Kalmer stole it.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Tommy Blackwell from ShotSpotter. I'm the Director of Security Solutions, and you might have guessed by now that I'm from Texas.
Tommy, can you click that on?
It shows on.
Hand it to the AV guy.
I'll try to be retired law enforcement officer from Texas. I've spent many years as an instructor in the Training Academy, and I normally talk loud to a large group anyway. But I know that this is being recorded and will be out there, so they want to get it through here as well. So I'll try to work on both of them. Thank you for having me here today. Let's see if my remote works. Here we go. So how often is a gun fired here on the streets of Jackson? The director's worked on this, we've looked at this, you think about it, you get 911 calls about it. The information that we've developed through our ShotSpotter clients, and we have about 100 cities across the US, is that for every single gun-related homicide, there were 10 other victims of gunshot wounds, 129 other shooting incidents, like the director described, and 396 shots fired. So what does that mean? It means that people would call a 911 less than 20% of the time. We continue to run these studies. Every time we add a new client, add another account, we assign a full-time staff member called a customer success manager to that account and works with the police and works with the staff to start watching the statistics, learn what's working and what needs to be tuned up. And this is one of the stats that we're constantly looking at, is that the 911 calls are only 20% of the shootings in the cities. And so why is that? Well, first off, sometimes it's recognition. It didn't sound like gunfire, or it could have been a car backfiring, or it could have been fireworks. It could have been something else. Additionally, folks hear it, they hear it often, and they go, somebody else has called about it. I'm not going to call. Somebody else has already called 911, and they've given them their information. Along with it comes, and I don't want to call 911, because I don't want my neighbors knowing that I was the one that called. So recognition, redundancy, retaliation, and to some degree, resignation. People in high-gunfire-violence communities just stop calling. They don't, they think the police don't care. They think the police know that everything that's going on on the streets, that they show up for all these other pieces, and if they're not showing up for this piece of gunfire, it's because they think the police don't care. We know that's not true. A corporate overview, I said that ShotSpotter's in 100 cities across the US, 33 patents. The company's been in business for 23 years. It is the premier gunfire detection company in the world. Currently, we have clients spread out through the population range. The bottom of my slide's cut off a little bit, so I can't see that piece. But about 32% of our clients are those cities that are big, bigger than a quarter million, you know, like Minneapolis, like Washington DC, like Boston, like New York, like Denver. And then 39% of them are in that 50,000 to 250,000 range. But what you can't see at the bottom down there is that 27% of our clients are less than 50,000 population. ShotSpotter is not a product, a tool just for large cities. It really helps those smaller cities. And it, think of it as a tool. What it does is it detects gunfire very accurately. It will provide a dot on a map with an 82-foot radius, saying right in the center of that dot is where you'll find bullet casings, that's where the shots fired. If it moves, there'll be multiple dots. This is a short, three-minute video about how it works. I'm going to take the microphone over to the speaker to make sure it all goes together.
A gun is fired somewhere in your city, so what happens now? In the past, there was a slim chance the shooting would be reported to police at all. Even when it was, it took precious time, and there was often confusion regarding the location of the shooting and other pertinent information. At least, that's how things were. ShotSpotter has changed all that. By utilizing advanced technology honed over two decades, we have automated the process. We monitor gunfire activity twenty-four-seven, so if a gun is fired in any area within ShotSpotter coverage, the system detects, locates, and immediately alerts police of the gunshot. So how does it work? It starts with acoustic sensors that are placed on buildings or lampposts throughout a neighborhood. If a gun is fired anywhere in the area, multiple sensors detect and timestamp the sound. The precise location of the gunshot is determined based on the amount of time it takes for the sound of the gunshot to travel to each individual sensor, effectively triangulating the sound. The exact location of the detected gunshot is indicated by a dot on a map. Once an alert is generated, it is immediately sent to our IRC, or Incident Review Center, where trained acoustic experts then analyze each incident in mere seconds, determining if the sound is gunfire. ShotSpotter acoustic analysts receive extensive training on reviewing and classifying gunfire by distinguishing gunshots from other impulsive sounds that are not gunshots. In addition, they're trained to append additional contextual information, such as multiple shooter alerts or full automatic weapons alerts, that can prove to be essential tactical intelligence for law enforcement agencies responding to these crimes. The entire transaction takes place in less than sixty seconds. With the real-time ShotSpotter alerts, police can immediately be dispatched to the scene. Utilizing the gunfire audio clip and tactical information, officers can approach an exact location quickly and safely to engage the shooter, interview witnesses, and collect key evidence at the crime scene. ShotSpotter's Respond app enables patrol officers to receive real-time alerts quickly and effectively, in their patrol car, on MDTs, or on the go on their smartphones. The ShotSpotter Alert System is used in more than ninety cities, and is an invaluable tool to help make communities safer by responding to gunshot incidents faster, making it easy to find evidence and reducing risk for police officers.
So it detects gunfire. Another piece that it does is it helps protect our police officers. When I, a shot's fired call is called in to nine-one-one, and the little circle represents the location of the shots, the caller in that little house just knows that they heard it outside their house someplace, and they call, and they give the address to nine-one-one, and we dispatch a police officer to go visit those folks and see what they do. I've done this call, I know you guys do this call, you don't even know that you drive right through the gunfire zone to get to the reportee to ask questions and say, where do you think this came from? How many shots was it? What else is going on? Instead of having good tactical information to keep the police safe, we rely on people calling nine-one-one. This is an example of the information that would be sent to police officers' phone, to their NDCs, to dispatch, to the watch commander's desk, to anybody that is in the police agency that deemed needs this. There is no limit on the number of these types of, it's a, basically, it's a cellphone application that will pop up with the immediate notification of gunfire. It will look just like this, an overhead view of a map with the circle in the middle of it, that eighty-two-foot or twenty-five-meter radius, the nine in the middle of that circle indicates nine gunshots were fired. On the left side is street name, address. Other pieces that are available in that is an immediate report about the number of shots fired and the locations, a street view, if the officer needs to have a look and see if there's something about that street that, that I need to know about, oh yeah, there's an overhead obstruction, along with the other types of gunfire incidents that have happened in that range and in that area. And finally, ShotSpotter helps connect the police with the community by showing up for those shots fired calls, that we change the narrative from the police don't care to the police are there. As, just as the director pointed out, we've got several successes, Minneapolis and DC, Minneapolis and DC are ShotSpotter clients, and if you notice, they've had good drastic reductions in their gunfire violence recently. It would, ShotSpotter is a software tool and should be thought of as a tool that could be used in conjunction with the, the GVI initiative. Any questions?
Any questions to council? Let me just think of a couple things here, these are some questions I brought up. Same problem with the microphone, apparently. These are some questions we brought up at a work session earlier, and I don't think many folks were there for that, and certainly wasn't televised, so I'm going to kind of repeat these. But we've had some scenarios recently, and Chief, was there a shooting last night, shots fired last night? Yes. Okay. Any idea what the response time was, just an example? Yeah. Well, we had some incidents in Jackson where, for example, two bullets went through the front of a local high school while the school is in session. With a call-in with the, within sixty seconds, I would imagine that's going to improve at least the accuracy of the response, if not the response time itself. There's also a case where a victim was shot and was undiscovered for some time. In that particular case, maybe what, fifteen, twenty minutes perhaps? So with a ShotSpotter being at least purportedly accurate and the timeliness of that, do we have any anecdotal evidence or stories from areas that you're covering where we have actual lives saved, which I could envision a scenario like that happening?
We actually have several of those, I wish I'd gathered them all up for you, but the most recent that, that I've visited with is University of Alabama had just installed their ShotSpotter system in the late part of the year. It was actually in the, the Christmas break, so there weren't students there, and shortly after 2:00 AM, they got a ShotSpotter alert, the police responded near the stadium and found a victim, gunshot victim, had been shot three times in the head. They never received a nine-one-one call for this guy. The only way that that person lived and had medical assistance was that the police responded to the shots fired call and found the victim.
Okay. Now, I understand you also have expert testimony that could be provided to a local jurisdiction, should there be a shooting, and that expert can come and testify as to the technology and certainly the historical data of that particular shooting, is that correct?
That is correct, along with detailed forensic reports that are, that are available that will help, that we will work, our staff will work with the prosecutor's office to make sure that they completely understand all the, the science that's there and the facts that, about when this shot was fired versus when that shot was fired.
And I could envision, in the line of work that I do, that some of these patterns, if they're actually recorded, and I don't think there's too many times that unless somebody has an audio as well as visual equipment at the location, that the pattern of gunshots can mean the difference between a, somebody being wrongfully convicted of murder one and something being murder two or manslaughter as well, because of the pattern of shots.
We, another anecdotal piece about that is I know of an officer-involved shooting with a young man, and the, some of the witnesses said the police officer shot first, and the police said, no, 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 that's not what happened. The science, the, the result of the ShotSpotter investigation, that said there were shots that came from here and shots that came from there, indicated exactly who did shoot first, and the police were exonerated in that that was very evident that the shooting started from the suspect.
And easily, it could have gone the other way, just depending on the way the science came down to it.
That's right.
Now, if a jurisdiction were to adopt a program like this and to get it started, what's the minimum square mile of coverage that ShotSpotter's looking at?
The minimum square mileage that, that we normally use with, with cities is three square miles, but you guys are smaller, and I know that, that ShotSpotter will consider a smaller area than that. I think we've provided a budgetary proposal for three square miles.
Okay, I, we'll look at that, I think, later. But my next question is, is the implementation time. Let's say, for some reason, if council were to adopt something like that, what's the implementation time of negotiating easements, getting the equipment up, and then calibrating it, actually being workable?
Right. It's a matter of weeks, generally, they're, they're, from the, the start to their finish, they're doing this stuff in less than eight weeks, and a lot of the time, our operations will begin before the contract is signed. If they really, if ShotSpotter says, yes, these folks are really serious about this, we are going to do a contract, our operation folks will go ahead and get started with the implementation, because it's, ShotSpotter's, the agency's not responsible for the hardware or the sensors or the software, the upgrades of the, of the servers or any of the pieces like that, it's all a subscription service. ShotSpotter's on the hook to install that and maintain it at that accuracy level.
You're a fancy alarm company, right?
That's right.
Okay. Very good, I have no further questions, thanks.
I have a few questions. So when you're talking about the time to get up and running, I can't remember if it was discussed last time or if this was something I read, but it sounded like there was a period of time of honing the equipment to improve accuracy, to get to a point at which it's more reliable, is that included in that estimate that you gave us on time, or is that...
Absolutely, absolutely. When, when we say go live, that means that it is at its one-hundred percent maximum and it's, it's running. And there, there is a calibration that the sensors need to do between themselves, they're, they're getting their time and location from GPS and using two different cell systems to talk to each other, and then also there's the algorithms back there to determine what's gunfire. So there's, there is some calibration in there.
And then in terms of the equipment, so is that, is that something that, once installed, can be moved, and does that start the whole process over? How, I mean, if we determine that our hotspots are shifting, or based even maybe on knowing where these locations are, what kind of guarantee is there for that, or what kind of recourse do we have?
Right. The, the model that we use is not so much about moving the sensors as to adding other ones. We can shut off the sensors, we can change the coverage zone depending on what is happening in the city, but it's not so much about removing them and placing them in other places. They find it, they find it, it's, it's less expensive just to put up another one.
That's what I was going to ask, it was a cost-saving...
Right, and of course, that's our cost, right?
So you still own the equipment?
That's right.
Okay.
And then it looks like for the first year, there's startup costs, one-time fees of forty grand, and then the annual reoccurring fee is one-ninety-five, so for the first year, it'd be two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand with some other incidentals for forensic report fees or consultations for any of that service type work on an hourly basis, and then after that first year, it would drop down to just the annual one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand?
That's based on that three square miles.
Okay.
Right? So if it was two-point-seven, if it was one-point-four, you know, that, that annual subscription rate would be different. That, that, that forty thousand for that service and installation, that is our staff here doing the training, the implementation, building the system.
And all of the ways that this is reported, that equipment is equipment that we already own presumably, because it's app-based, or...
It is, it's a web-based application that we will give it to your administrators and police, you guys decide who has access to the, basically to that particular website.
And kind of off of Colleen's question, the installation fee for the forty thousand dollars for the first year, if we move that around, are we being billed to add those additional units? Like, say if we're moving that three square miles around to a different area in the city, are we, would we then spend more money to like add additional triangulation added?
I don't want to say there, there wouldn't be, I have, I have seen when it, when it just didn't make that, they didn't need to train any more officers or staff about how to deal with it, and it didn't change the overall cost to ShotSpotter to, to move the coverage area another quarter-square mile this way and shut off this part down this way, that just wasn't being effective. But it, it could, you know, it could be a lot different, too. It could be that instead of doing this three square miles, we want to go do those three square miles, and in that case, there, there certainly could be another service fee.
Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
Where are you working at? We're in Texas.
Travis County Sheriff's Office, Austin, Texas.
Austin, right. Very good.
All right, next up, we have five C, I'm not sure if this was a presentation or passing out of information.
Information's in your packet, it's not a presentation, I just wanted to make it clear that the difference between the last time we presented for the lead service lines, this is not on the agenda for asking for approval, is from eighty-eight percent down to thirty-nine percent increase because we spoke with the DEQ, they, they appear to be open to a thirty-year replacement instead of a twenty-year replacement, and we also equalize the tiers so that there's no, big business doesn't get a discount in rate over top of residential user, and it's just there for your information.
Thank you. And then is, do we know when we might hear back on the twenty-to-thirty-year request?
I, I don't know yet.
Okay, that's fair.
I'll get it for you next meeting.
Okay, and then five D was also passed out in our books, says no presentation. Move on from those, no public hearings, on to citizen comment. You were up first. Stuck onto the top of my stack.
Good evening, council, my name is Tom Crogary from 2404 Cobb Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the Jackson Pride Center this evening. Tomorrow, May 29th, at 6:00 PM, in the auditorium of the Carnegie Branch Library, we have Jay Kaplan from the ACLU of Michigan coming to speak to us, excuse me, for an in-depth education on LGBTQ rights in the state of Michigan and beyond. Supreme Court rejected an anti-transgender bathroom case leaving an inclusive policy in place, as well as the World Health, or excuse me, the World Health Organization, who will no longer classify being transgender as a mental disorder, but will not officially go into effect until January 1st, 2022. Next month, we have a calendar full of education history and conversations highlighting the 50th anniversary of Stonewall being June, the National Pride Month. In July, we will go, we will begin addressing the LGBTQ community and the 2020 census with the LGBTQ community being left off of the census, we're making sure that people are counted. And in August, rounding up our summer with our third annual Pride Festival and Parade. Thank you for this time, thank you.
Thank you, Tom, look forward to celebrating Pride Month next month. Deborah Muhey.
Good evening. My name's Debbie Muick, and I'm here on behalf of the Henry Ford Health Systems and the Jackson Task Force on Human Trafficking. We are hoping a presentation event, an awareness event, on June 7th. We'd like to invite all of you here to come. Please give the phone number to call. It's on the sheet you have at your desks. Prosecuting Attorney Jar Zinka will be on our healthcare panel, who is leading the healthcare panel. We will have Jeremy Norwood, who will be our keynote speaker, along with a very courageous human trafficking survivor. And Dr. Zakiya Alavi, she is a child psychologist from Michigan State University. You're all cordially invited. I hope you can come. Please keep your memos. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. George. Waring. Of Leroy.
1409 Leroy. Good evening. I just want to, I've got some comments, and some of it involves, well, we'll get to that. So the budget, I think, I'm not sure we're going to vote on that tonight, and some of what I say might be redundant from the last, from the hearing we had two weeks ago. Some things on the budget that seem to be maybe beyond the means of the average citizen of Jackson. And I forgot what they were. One of them was, I think, a shower in this building for $88,000. So maybe we could find a less expensive way to do that. Hey, can I say, well, I guess I can say whatever I want, right? All right. Thank you. All right. Is, I really, and I think most citizens really appreciate all the work that the employees of the City of Jackson do. So I don't want to be misjudged. My personal experience with any City of Jackson employee has been fantastic. But I'm kind of, I guess, economics and being able to afford some of the things that are presented in the budget, as well as some things that are tangentially, I guess, part of the budget, such as salary, our salary pay scale here in the city. I already touched on this, too. And since then, I guess you're probably all aware, there's been several newspaper articles, and I know they may not be 100% accurate, but they are giving a lot of thought compiled in one place. So it is kind of concerned the, to be presented, the level of salaries of some of our city employees. And as well as the, to the best of my knowledge, the automatic pay rate, pay increases that are given, that's used versus an evaluation-based raise system. So I personally would be more so of an evaluation system for our employees. I think that as a business owner myself, I would be less likely to just automatically give all of my employees a raise, just everybody gets the same raise, versus evaluating. And I think that motivates any employee to do the best possible job they can if their, if their raise is dependent on their evaluation and job performance.
Thank you, George.
But I've got more.
I know. But everyone yells at me for three minutes, so.
I know.
I try to stick to it.
I know. I understand. Thank you.
Delia.
1106 South Grinnell. I was disheartened to hear about Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. I grew up in Pennsylvania, and in 2011, they tried to apply for a bankruptcy because their spending was way up. They were, they, first of all, they bought a baseball stadium. Then they bought the team, so the team wouldn't go to Massachusetts to play, instead of in Pennsylvania. Then they built an incinerator. They built, they said, oh, the mayor thought that a museum about Civil War paraffinary would be good. They built an incinerator. They finally, when the mayor was concerned about school performance, he bought, he built a 2.7 million school, he built a 2.7 million school. But still, somebody said, the weight room was very nice there, but they didn't have enough books. The problem with this thing in Harrisburg was there wasn't much thought given to what supports life? What makes it work? Instead, it was just all these structures that they were building. So I want to say three things about a big emphasis on building, on supporting the downtown Jackson. One, I think there are gambles involved. You might help a restaurant to come in, but who knows? A restaurant may close up. You might build a parking lot, but then only the business can, beside it, can use it. Number two, there's little consideration for low-income people. We've asked for lighting, increased lighting where it's dark. We've talked about stores, grocery stores downtown. These are real needs that are present in Jackson. Third, I think that that emphasis of doing downtown, of building it up, it kind of gets, leads to a trans, to an environment that isn't transparent. You're working on stuff, and you're not caring about what other people think. Like, I'd like to have a situation where we could talk about things that concern us. You'd listen to us, we'd listen to you. You know a lot more than we do, probably, about the city, but we know some things about people. So I'm looking for more dialogue. I met a man who worked for the city, and he's retired now. But he talked about, he talked about moving to Napoleon, out of the City of Jackson because of the high cost of taxes and other things that are going on. So he seemed like a real nice guy, and I thought, well, that would be a loss for Jackson. He moves to Napoleon where it's cheaper. So that's.
Thank you, Delia. Stacy.
I'm Stacy Guthrie. I live at 206 Third Street. I just was a little confused when we added 11F to the agenda and didn't specifically state what it says. So I'm just wondering exactly how certain, which transparency are we referring to, as it's not very transparent? One, I mentioned that the budget seems a little high as it's related to the size of our city. I'm really going to leave the speaking of the budget to others, though, as they've been diving into it and tearing it apart, and that there's many citizens I know that are concerned. I'm just wondering if it has something to do with some of the lack of transparency, and is there need to be more specified in the budget, rather than, like, as far as salaries, rather than just generalized in the budget? I couldn't understand, I don't know when I read that, who, where all the money's going to, how many employees are in those departments, et cetera. That's the only thing that I was kind of confused about. That's the only thing that I was confused. I was wondering if it includes more efforts in schools, especially since we have youth in our community who are affected by our community violence. I have students who have told me that their parents are considering moving because they've had shots fired through their walls, because they've, into the bedrooms that they're sleeping in. And I have students who come in and will say, did you hear that guy sleep last night? Did you, and say, did you hear about the shooting? And even, they may not be reading in a traumatized form. They are traumatized, and I want to make sure that we're including something, the component. I know it mentioned community and families and people involved, but even, maybe not even, it may not even be a family member that's involved in that or has witnessed that, but maybe they're back in the shadows somewhere. And we have a lot of schools that could benefit from how could more, how can I say, more trauma therapy available? And I know there's community resources out there. We do use restorative practices in our school. We do, I was wondering how much the GVI uses restorative practices, because I feel that's a big component. And because I feel. The question I had was the call-ins. How can I have tenure after they're required? And I just didn't know if, I don't know how that is in Kalamazoo, and maybe that's something you can answer later. I did, I did find out Cindy did talk to you about when I called in fireworks yesterday, because I had seen that there was a new state law. And I was told that there was a state law. They could fire, there was a state law. But there was a new state law that you couldn't do it on Memorial Day. Maybe you couldn't correct on Memorial Day. And so I didn't, if any officers were sent out to the area. But they were pretty big fireworks, because they sounded like bombs going off. They weren't the little bomb rockets. They were big ones. So, and the rockets, they were in my backyard. So that's, thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. And I just want to be, I mean, welcome to follow up with Elmer on some of the questions you laid out. But just for everyone else, too, and if you do have a copy of the budget, it does kind of lay out, per each department, there's an activity personnel chart within each department that lays out the structure of who reports to who, and within their, like, how many, this is the Police Department Activity Personnel Chart. Lays out the Director of Police and Fire Services, Elmer, his assistant, Deputy Director, two police lieutenants, all the way down to 15 part-time crossing guards. And then on the back of that, within each department, there's the personnel schedule, which lays out the budgeted salaries and all the wages. Some of it, like, the 15 part-time crossing guards, isn't broken out by salaries and wages, but you could, you know, divide that number by 15 and get a good reasonable. That's okay. It's on, it's on all the different departments have. It's a lot with, I mean, it's, it's, you know, 300 pages and a lot to get through. Peter Bournemouth.
Should have been last. I turned mine in first. Peter Bournemouth, 142 West Pearl Street. I'd like to reference the budget a little and acknowledge the article that hit MLive. It's probably the first piece of real investigative reporting I've seen in a while on MLive, so I appreciate that. And I want to note that there was something I thought was important. It said that most cities our size do not even bother having a city attorney anymore. And the city attorney's department takes up considerable salary. We heard it was 120-something thousand, and then the second-place person is getting, you know, good chunk, close to 100,000. And the city attorney contracts out all cases anyway. I mean, really, I'm in the Michigan Court of Appeals against the City of Jackson on a transparency issue. And it's a FOIA case. And I'm going up against Plunkett Cooney. I'm going up against the single-best appellate attorney in the state, Mary Marison. I'm not going up against Bethany Smith. So you're already paying outside attorneys to do all the work when it goes to court. So why do we have this highly-staffed, highly-expensive city attorney? Who, the people who come here, the crazies, because we care about our city, and we care about what the city does with our money, and we care about our children's future in the city. So I would question, do we need a treasurer? No. Do we need a city attorney? No. Could we get by with someone else focused in that? Sure, to deal with the daily, you know, FOIA requests and make sure that they're handled. Because once it goes to court, our city attorney isn't there. I also want to talk a little bit about what people have said about the city not communicating. We had a very minor issue on Pearl Street. This follows the consumers debacle. They were going to put a bump out so Joe Nightlight could have a patio for tables. They extended it over two more bump outs. Now, actual construction, as it looks like, does appear to be a problem for Collins Brothers. But they told us they were going to do this. They came around and spoke to us from the Engineering Department or from City Hall. And so according, we're losing, you know, three-street or four-street parking places. That's a concern to shoepecks. Collins Brothers is wondering, are their trucks still going to be a brother swing into that parking lot and back up to our loading dock? No one talked to us. Communication is the key to having your citizens respect you. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And I know a lot of those cases, maybe Mark can correct me, but, and I'm not speaking specifically to that case, but a lot of those are covered by our insurance. So we're not paying directly for that representation. John C. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John King, 2003 Third Street here in the city. Transparency, that's sort of a key word. I know you ran on transparency during the last election. I think with the pay raise schedule, the way it was put in, it was put in during a special city council, and then it was snuck in. I think the worst thing was when the appointed officials were sort of put into it, I think it was April, and it was one of five or six things in a list. And I'm not sure if anyone on the city council at the touch envisioned what that would do, but that was sort of sneaky, I think a lot of people think. For the budget process, I, like many people, want to restate, excuse me, that I would like to see investments in neighborhoods or more emphasis on that, as opposed to downtown or the DPW building and things like that. Transparency, I would like to see the issue of Cindy Ewing's petitions addressed out where the public can see it, not taken, you know, to close session, and then maybe a gag order put on everyone. I know there's the petition, the vacancy of property with the Commonwealth Commerce Center that Patrick Birch had done, but it wasn't notarized, so I'm not sure if that means it's useless, the petition or not. Transparency, I had done a FOIA. I know there was the one with the sit pat for one of Bethany Smith's refuting allegations of one city official. I had done one previously that was denied when it was just her refuting allegations of another city official. I think the decision was, I don't have a FOIA attorney to take it up, so I was denied that. Now, obviously, I knew at the time that I should have gotten it. Fought it up with this latest that MLive FOIA. It's essentially the same, yet Mark Porterfield signed it, and he should know better that, you know, I should have gotten it. So I'll call him out, you know, right now in the pub, that he knew better than that, that it should have been filled. But yet you signed a notarized statement saying that, no, it's attorney-client privilege. It was not. So transparency, again, it's important. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John. You're always so polite at the end of your talk. Tasha Carter.
Hello.
Hello.
All right. When I come to these meetings, I know that I'm promoting citizens' awareness. Sometimes I feel a little defeated because I feel like citizens, they come and they express their concerns, and you just vote the way you had planned on voting before you came, anyway. And some of the things that you bring to the table, it's your own priorities. A perfect example of that is how the two proposals for about approximately $300,000 each were requested at the last meeting. Pat was specifically asked to find a way to squeeze those funds. Pat was specifically asked to find a way to squeeze those funds in, um, to the already overstretched budget. And, uh, the G, hearing the presentations today, it, they sound like, um, great programs. I'm not saying that they're bad, but it's just funny that no one can find money to help those who are struggling the most in the city. I mean, for goodness sake, there was, um, dialogue at the last meeting, um, about whether or not we can pay firefighters, um, or you act like there's no opportunities for, or or no money to help, um, increase programs to help people in our city. Meanwhile, thousands of dollars are automatically being approved and raises without question. And, uh, at least according to the MLive article, some of you weren't aware of the process or the, the frequency in, or the impact of, um, salaries, um, and the increases. As you discuss and vote on the budget tonight, I ask that you not vote yes, um, to the budget as is. Um, there are some opportunities to modify the budget. Some of those ideas will be shared, um, specifically by, um, other people as you hear, um, the citizens' comments. I have concerns specifically with the frequency of corporate welfare. Um, the definition of that is government support, financial aid, subsidy of private business, enlarged businesses, or other special favorable treatment of corporations such as tax incentives. Some may label this activity as crony, you know, capitalism, which caters to cozy relationships between government and business. Some may also say that the practice is designed to thwart competition, competition and/or ease the way toward success for favored, a favored view. Personally, I see that there are benefits if, I say if, the city and the community actually are receiving return on investment. Um, none of that is transparent, so the citizens are left with the question of, is the city truly benefiting? Could council disclose and/or share who has received deals or tax abatements? How much the deals are worth? How much future loss there is? How much has been given in the form of land below, uh, market value? And what is costing the city in the site prep and services? All of you should be asking these questions, I don't, in your one-on-one with the city manager. If you're not, you're doing an injustice. Thank you.
Thank you, Tasha. John Wilson.
Good evening. John Wilson, ten forty-five South Durant Street. I wasn't able to attend either of the, uh, public hearings on the budget, unfortunately, and, uh, just kind of skimmed over it the last couple of days. No time for questions, but just a few comments regarding the budget. First of all, um, the council will vote tonight to increase residential property taxes via Public Act three forty-five for this budget. And, uh, but they'll also vote not to increase the DDA, uh, millage levy. Can't figure that one out, but maybe you can all discuss that before you vote on the budget. So again, you're going to vote to increase residential property taxes, and at the same time, leave the DDA alone. Even though you're going to spend two point four million dollars on the, uh, Vermilelands Building and the Masonic Temple out of this budget, two point four million dollars. We all want downtown to, uh, to thrive, but the Downtown Development Authority, which Vermilelands and the Masonic will be a part of, uh, I know they might have a little skin in the game, at least with the Masonic, with the dance studio, but everyone in the downtown is going to benefit, hopefully, from this, uh, development. Lots of, lots of, uh, money being spent down there. The general fund budget, line item one zero one seven two eight, economic development. A few years back, I think Jonathan, you were working with Pat Birch out of economic development at this time. Uh, this was when you first started trying to lure and entice, um, development downtown for apartment living. You created a kitty that involved general fund monies, and that money would be used to, uh, help the developer with part of their interior design and some of their exterior design. I see that the economic development budget has an increase over the last two years of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in this year's proposed budget. That's close to three hundred thousand dollars that you're going to increase the economic development budget by. Now, I don't know what all is involved with that line item, but does this involve helping out the downtown developers with granite countertops, flat-screen TVs, et cetera? And at the same time, you're, uh, going to vote to increase our residential property taxes, still about Public Act three forty-five? Anyways, uh, I wish you well with this budget. I don't agree with it. I hope you vote it down and, uh, discuss it some other time. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We had a, a couple of, uh, commenters talk about downtown development and some of the things that are happening and some of, um, the work that's happening on economic development within the downtown area. Um, and I think it's important to note, um, when, when, uh, we're talking about equity and building more equitable, uh, city, some of the, uh, and, uh, large amount of those projects are, um, load, uh, projects that are light tech projects, low to moderate income. I know at least four of them, the senior lofts, which I actually visited today on MLK, um, the Commonwealth new development that we, uh, announced earlier this year, the Gen Cap, which has been around for a while, going into, um, the, uh, old Citizen Patriot Building and, uh, the new Habitat, uh, development that we're working on. Mr. Manager, can you kind of talk about those projects and what the, the amount-
Comment, time to this, folks. Don't we have Mayor Earl and manager comments at the end of the meeting?
Yes, we do.
Feel to address those.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have, uh, obviously Miller Valentine, which is the first project that happened. It's in the corner of Franklin, Wesley, and MLK. Um, that is actually forty-nine units of low mod income units. We also have this, uh, Citizen Patriot Building, which is general capital. They'll be under construction, um, about mid, about mid-June. Um, we also have, um, Commonwealth Properties that's proposing a light tech project on Michigan Avenue between the two family services buildings. And then you have, um, uh, the Habitat Project as well that we're working with them with home funds. We also, uh, in the last couple of years, we've seen a significant renovation that council has participated in in terms of a pilot program for the Atsigo Hotel, the renovation of the Atsigo Hotel, and also substantial renovation of the Elaine Hotel, um, a number of things. And, and I just want to make clear is that these projects, um, when we decide, or when council decides to support these projects and where they are, they're located where they are simply because it's closer to services. A lot of people talk about wanting those services close to neighborhoods. Unfortunately, it's pretty difficult to get these types of buildings constructed in an area where the walk score is, where which mischief requires. The walk score has to be high enough to get funding. The only way you can do that is to have it close to the Center for Family Health and Children and Family Services, all those services that people of low mod income would typically use in, in some cases. So that's why we have, that's why they tend to congregate in and toward the downtown because that's where our social services are provided.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I only ask because, um, a number of people have, um, made the point at a couple of different city council meetings and wanted to lay that back on the table. Cindy Eby.
So you've heard from quite a few people tonight about their objections to the budget, but we don't expect you to listen to us. Um, you didn't listen when we objected to the Jackson Greenwood Roundabout. You didn't listen when we objected to any corporate welfare. You didn't listen when we asked you to prioritize lighting on our dart streets. You didn't listen when we asked you for second opinions on saving homes before demolition. You didn't, uh, listen when we asked you to focus CDBG money where it's intended to be used in our hardest-hit neighborhoods. You didn't listen when we asked you to give us a tax break. I could go on with this list. I mean, it, it would go on forever. People, we, we the people are not one of your first priorities. We come after your cronies, your buddies, your desires for a glitzy downtown, your wish to give away our current and future tax dollars to corporate interests, including low to moderate income housing, which is all profit-driven. So you leave us no choice. If you pass this budget tonight as it stands, I have the petitions right here to do a referendum on it. I will start tonight. If anybody here wants to do a referendum on the budget, I'll be out in the lobby. You can get signatures from me as soon as they pass the budget. I mean, you can give me your signature as soon as you pass the budget. We need four hundred and seven valid signatures in thirty days. We can do it. You could, um, you could try to end our right to referendum, which I understand the, uh, Commission on Reviewing the Charter has already written in, has, is recommending, uh, ways that you can limit our right. So you can do that. We'll fight you on it, and your reelection chances will get slimmer with your opposition to basic democratic principles. I have heard, uh, many times that people have, uh, experienced retaliation from the city for certain, um, actions or words that they might say here. And I'm just offering you tonight the opportunity to retaliate against this because you can vote, vote down eleven C, what used to be eleven C and is now twelve B, I believe. And that, that way you can get your retaliation, and I'll see you in court.
Cindy, you might need those notarized.
Yes, I do. I will have them notarized.
Laura Schleckie.
Laura Schleckie, seven fifty-nine West Michigan Avenue. Um, I just wanted to make a note that when I was on city council before, we had a committee called the Policies and Personnel Committee. And I thought it was really helpful because we reviewed, uh, ordinances before they were put up for a vote or first reading. And we did, uh, appointed official evaluations. Uh, so I would highly recommend that maybe you take a look and put that committee back in place, whether you divide it or keep it the way it was, or reestablish how you do it. But I thought it was really valuable, so, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Stephen Razor.
Thank you, Mayor Dobbs. Uh, I got three things I want to talk about tonight. I want to first start with, uh, a kudos. Uh, earlier today, I was driving, uh, east on Franklin, and there was construction happening, which is a good sign in a growing economy. But there was a construction sign blocking the, the flow of traffic, so I promptly, uh, not while driving, sir, but I promptly took a picture and emailed it to the city manager, and within an hour, he responded saying that, uh, he had heard of it and was working to make it so that visibility was cleared. Uh, second, I want to talk about, and this is my main topic, and since we've gone off script and you've kind of responded to some people's comments after they sat down, I'm hoping maybe we can do this right here as maybe a, a back and forth. And this is a discussion on the Opens Meeting Act, which this council met with two budget work sessions that should have been special meetings as they were originally posted. First, they were special meetings, then they were work sessions, then one of them was a special meeting again, and then at the last minute, it was a work session again. If that's not just an attempt to confuse citizens and residents, uh, I, I don't know what it is, that it's just extremely disheartening. So I defined then, but since there's more people here, I'll define it again. Deliberation is what's at key here. The deliberation of the word deliberate is done intentionally. Engage in long and careful consideration. Kudos to Councilwoman Sullivan because what I witnessed with her questioning on, uh, the fire department and staffing in the fire department was nothing less than long and deliberate, uh, consideration because she had a literate questions in which city employees attempted to answer or respond to. At the first work session, which I was not able to attend, council member Alexander pointed out that the city has been levying and spending the public improvements millage illegally by not spending them on things directed that they should be spent on in the city charter. That was fixed in the budget by the second work session. So was that not done intentionally? Is that not deliberation? Uh, let me, the thing I want to talk about here, this is a twenty-page handbook. It's called the Opens Meeting Handbook from Attorney General Dana Nessel, our current attorney general. And just so you know, that's MI.gov forward slash FOIA dash OMA. And I want to draw your attention to page eight of that. This is based off of state law with wonderful citations and sources at the bottom, also based off of attorney general opinions, which I'm sure you know are as good as law unless challenged or changed. May a quorum of a board gather outside an open meeting act without violating the OMA. Yes, in some instances. A quorum may also meet for a workshop, seminar, informal gathering, or professional conference designed to convey to the conference participants information of a professional interest to all conference participants. This was not a conference. This was a council meeting. It goes on to say, when gatherings are designed to receive input from officers or employees of the public body, it must be held at a public meeting. Considering questions were of Director Hitt, Fire Chief Wooden, and Finance Director Holmes, I would say it's clear you violated the Opens Meeting Act.
Thank you, Stephen. Mindy.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am a property owner and landlord in the city, and I just want to say that our objective at the Chamber of Commerce, Inc. Initiative, and Experience Jackson is to create a strong local economy where all can prosper. And we believe that a key to accomplishing that is economic development and business growth because that increases tax base, that increases the amount of high-paying jobs we have available, and it brings people downtown. And the more people we have on our streets, the more active they are, the less crime we have. And while we, as the Chamber of Commerce, don't always agree with the decisions this body makes, I don't admire the position you're in. I respect what you do. I do not have the courage to run for office, so I thank you for what you do. It is a tough job, and we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. Uh, that concludes citizen comment. We don't have any petitions and communications to address tonight. Brings us to item number nine, the consent calendar. Need a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. The clerk will tally and display. Motion passes unanimously. Item ten A, Ordinance twenty nineteen dash ten, amending chapter eighteen to allow for harm reduction programming, uh, in the city of Jackson. This is the second and final reading. Uh, recommendation is final adoption of ordinance twenty nineteen dash ten.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Clerk will tally and display. Motion passes six to one. Ten B, recommendation to approve the extension of the twenty seventeen Bridge Consulting Services contract. Recommendation is to approve the first extension of the twenty seventeen Bridge Consulting Services contract with Great Lakes Engineering out of Lansing in the amount of seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the appropriate documents in accordance with purchasing agent.
Move to approve.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Clerk will tally and display. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, item C has been moved, so we'll move on to new business. Uh, item eleven A is resolution to, uh, approve and adopt the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty annual city of Jackson budget.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose an amendment, um, hugging back to what we talked about at the last meeting, which is to move to add three firefighters, um, three firefighter positions from the, to the general fund budget. Um, and I'd like to specify that that begin the day after the expiration of or exhaustion of funds from the C for Grant.
Support. It's been moved- It's been moved and supported. Sorry, was your, can you reclarify your motion was to adopt the agenda?
With that change, yes.
Okay. I'm going to write some of these down.
And the caveat that they don't start until after the SAFER.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? So in regards to this amendment, may we ask where those funds are coming from to add that new spending?
Monopoly money. Are you asking me?
Yeah, are you proposing to have the city manager do that, or?
Yeah, we asked for the city manager to come up with a proposal. My understanding is that it is possible. In the proposed long-term plan here, the issue was not around the first or even second year. We're budgeting for one year here. I've done a number of different calculations looking forward, and I think there was discussion also in that memo that we received earlier on this evening to talk about a long-term plan, which is something I know the department has asked for. And I very much support looking at that, seeing what that means. There's discussion in there about actually increasing beyond that. I'm not proposing that we do that at this time. I think that we grow as we're able to and as, as necessary for the safety and well-being of not only our department but our residents. And I think that we can safely, according to the numbers that we were given, take on those three firefighters to increase each shift by one.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. Council, council member talked about doing some calculations. If I could get some further information what those calculations are, if, if not, to figure out how this is going to get paid for. And also, I'd like to follow up with understanding what the, if there's a new SAFER grant available and what the details of that are.
So my understanding is that there is a new SAFER grant, but we don't have all the details about when it is going to be listed. We do believe it's going to be a 25, 25, and 75 percent match, but doesn't require us to take on people afterwards, that we're not guaranteeing anything after the expiration of that. In terms of calculations, I mean, I've done a number of different rounds. The, the numbers have been put into this document here that account for just nine months, and we heard from Mr. Holmes last time that the money for the pensions was already budgeted into this current budget. It already exists for that time period. So we're looking at the nine months wages, and the other calculations I did just were for my own assurances that looking ahead, we were taking on something that I believe that we can fund. And I know we've talked quite a bit about the changes that happened to the pension plan and the, due to the changes in the way that that is calculated for our newest hires, that we're much more solvent now than we were for the folks that are already in these regular positions. So I, if there's anything further that you want to add, Mr. Manager?
I, I just, I can answer some questions if anybody has any more questions.
Any further questions for the city manager?
Yes, so, so I know we asked a question about where the funds coming from, but I'm trying to get feedback from the, the chief of police, and could they give us more feedback on this? I think you had a conversation with them about the, about what, what we could do with adding more firefighters. So can we get more feedback or information on that?
The discussion I had with the deputy fire chief and the director of police and fire services regarded the calculations that the director of police and fire services had his staff calculate than the cost of a firefighter. At that point, we recognized that for the first year, there would be no additional cost for the pension, the $52,000 per employee pay into retirement each year because we'd already accounted for that in the SAFER grant, and that was, as Councilman, Councilwoman Sullivan has already suggested has happened already. Our question, we didn't really speak of where the money was coming from, if that's what you're asking. The concern that I think we all had was that, and you'll notice that the, the recommendation from them is different than, than the councilwoman's motion. And it was only because we still have, we still have agreements with the IFF that are currently in place. And I think what Councilwoman Sullivan was trying to do is to make sure this happened after those agreements had expired, which I understand. We have our projections for, and the finance director feels comfortable that our projections for income tax revenue are up this year, a little higher than anticipated, even in the budget. And we believe that adding three firefighters could be accomplished. We only felt uncomfortable with the amount. And I think it's, it's not whether or not they can be accomplished. We think it'd be accomplished. I think it, in, in our opinion, was that it should be accomplished at a lower amount because we also tried to fit in one of either the ShotSpotter or the GVI at the same time so that you could do one of, you know, two of the three, is what council charged me to try to find a way to do, and that's what we thought we had done. But it does require a little less than the motion that was made.
Okay, any?
Yes. Mr. Manager, can you clarify that last comment? You said you, the recommendation was for less than the motion that was made. So to fit two of those three programs, what was the recommendation?
The recommendation's in the packet. I, I'd have to turn to it, Councilman, if I can even find it now. Well, I've got it here in my files. Hold on one second. I apologize. Nope, it's not there. Can't seem to find it now. It was, I believe, do you have it here? I'm sorry. Sorry. We knew that, that for the first year, would be retaining these three firefighters would be 162,000 to 36. And then to continue to maintain these three positions in 2021 would jump to 398 because that, roughly 398,000. Fiscal year 21, 22 would be 412, which includes a 345 Act pension that would have to happen through 345 Pension Millage, as was mentioned here by one of the, one of the people in the audience today. What we were suggesting is that we begin authorization to negotiate in the, for the plan for a 2021 fiscal year amount of 300,000, and then 313 for the 2121. We, it wasn't our recommendation to change the first year of this at all, just that, that the labor attorney and I have the ability to, to negotiate what that looks like in terms of if you run out of money later on, what does council do? I think that's the difference, the only difference between what Councilwoman Sullivan is proposing and what we had in the recommendation.
So if I may clarify, there isn't actually a lesser amount for the first year, but for just looking forward, correct?
Correct, just looking forward.
So for the portion that we're actually approving a budget on?
Yeah. And our, and our concern really was not whether we could afford the first three years, is whether or not if you applied for a SAFER, we know that this, that these three staff members, the money you spend cannot be used as the match, and you can't start funding these people with the SAFER grant if you in fact get it. Now, the concern was that if you apply for, say, six people under SAFER in the next round, where would you get that 25, 25, and 75 match on top of the money you're increasing now? That's something council's going to have to decide because quite frankly, the numbers are the numbers.
So by trying to hire these three firefighters now, we might jeopardize the ability to get nine under the SAFER grant in the future?
It's all a matter of money, right? How much money you have to, to do that? I think regardless of whether you hired more firefighters now or didn't, I believe that the extra, the cost associated with the SAFER is different this year than it was in the past. Although they have not required, doesn't appear, and Dave and I discussed this, it doesn't appear that we would have to keep them beyond our financial ability to keep them once the SAFER, but there is a, a larger match cost for the three-year SAFER. We don't know if we're even be eligible, and quite frankly, we don't even know if the extension that we requested, which I think expire, the current SAFER expires July, doesn't it?
Yes.
So we don't even know that we'll have an extension to use the money we currently have, and we're still waiting for an answer from FEMA on that.
I'd like to move to amend the motion to also include the group violence intervention programming.
On order. Do we already have a motion to amend on the floor?
You did a motion to amend with the amendment for the three firefighters, if I heard that right. To adopt an, with the following amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wrote down here. I had moved to adopt the budget with the amendment to fund three firefighters into the general fund when their funding expires from the SAFER grant. Is that correct?
Or the SAFER grant expires, whichever.
Oh, yeah.
If it, if we don't get granted the extension, then it could end in July.
Okay.
One final question, Mr. Mayor, on the current motion on the floor. If this is not approved in the budget today, we still have the flexibility, Mr. Manager, for this to come back before, say, in a few months if you find a more opportune?
I, I think that's the beauty of a, of a fluid budget document. This is just a spending plan that could be amended at any time. It could be amended every meeting if council so chose to do.
Thank you.
All right, so I'd like to make an amendment to fund the gun violence intervention program, I think, for the.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes?
Don't we need to vote on the motion on the floor to amend the budget before we go on to another motion to amend it?
A motion to adopt and amend, so.
We've got multiples on the floor.
Well, can we treat it as just an amendment?
If it's simpler to change my motion to be a standalone.
Amendment.
I'm fine with that.
It's cleaner to, absolutely cleaner to do one amendment at a time.
Okay.
So we know, you start mixing the, there's, there's different feelings about the different programs.
Sure.
You put two of them together, you may want to support one, not another.
I'm, I'm totally fine with that.
Okay, so amend the budget.
Yes, just amending the budget.
All right. All right, so the First Amendment to the budget is to fund the three firefighters into the general fund when their funding expires from SAFER grant or when the SAFER grant expires. Any further discussion on the First Amendment? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. The clerk will tally and display. Motion passes four to three. All right, I'd like to make a Second Amendment to fund the group violence intervention programming as discussed by Director Hitt. For the first year in the amount of $180,000 in the 1920 budget with the, you know, hopes that we can work with some community partners and bring that down. But did you have ideas of where that could come from, or do you want me to suggest some?
We can work through it with, with some ideas in mind. Sorry, we have some ideas.
Which were?
Could I, could I just clarify? Is that a, the first year I thought was 105, and the second year was another amount?
It was 105 with, without the personnel, so there's 75 in the personnel.
So it's the entire two-year amount then that you want to put in the budget?
No. So the, the program is 105 for the first year, but the personnel we would hire to manage the program is 75,000.
In addition to the 105?
Yes. Do you want me to say that again? Yeah, the cost of the program for the first year is 105. The person to manage the program is 75 for a total cost of 180, which is what your motion was, right? So, support, do you need a second still? Yeah, one second.
Yep.
Do you want to clarify what you guys were thinking?
We just had preliminary discussions. I, I don't really want to project out here what organizations we'd be asking for money from without having had that discussion with them first.
Okay.
I'm sure you have some ideas too we can talk about.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so your motion is to add $180,000 into it, but we still have the possibility to get some funding from these other organizations. Is it more prudent to wait until we find out what that other funding might be and then fund the remaining amount through the city if necessary, if we decided at that point?
I, I think that it is an important program. I want to give the police department the confidence to move forward, that we're supportive of this, that we'll fund it and get started on that work irregardless of what financial resources may become available in the future. I think that there's certainly some things within this budget that can be changed. If there are items that, if, if there's a way to, that the city manager thinks that it can fit, great, let's put it into the budget. And I want to make sure that the police department has the ability to, to move forward in contracting and securing someone who can actually execute this program and reduce some of the gun violence in our community. It's been, we've had people come and talk about it during public comment. I've heard about it at countless different events, talked about it to people on the doors, on the phone. You know, it's a, it's a real problem. It's gotten, in the last year, gotten worse, and I want to make sure that it's in the budget so that we can get moving on it.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I absolutely agree that gun violence is something that we should be addressing. My thought is simply that the GVI, I mean, this here is a presentation that I, you know, just had the privilege of watching just, you know, an hour ago. So we're looking at spending $200,000 for the GVI program, which according to the presentation, it said that, let's see, it basically accounts for 0.5 percent of the city is responsible for 50 percent of the gun violence. So even if the program's 100 percent successful and it completely eliminates all gun violence from that 0.5 percent that it focuses on, we still have half the problem left. You know, we've had a few months to look, and at least me, myself, I've had the opportunity to look and learn a little bit more about the ShotSpotter.
I'm not sure if the, what you just said was accurate. Half of the, half of a percent of the population is responsible.
Causes 50 percent of the.
Or somewhere around 70 percent of.
There's two different slides. One said 50, and then another said 70. But even again, even if it's 100 percent successful, that's only solving that portion of it. You know, we've had months to look at ShotSpotter. That also seems like a promising technology, but I have a feeling that we wouldn't have the opportunity to do both. You know, I mean, if we're in a situation of choosing one to the other, I'd like to be able to choose carefully. You know, and honestly, with a few months to look at the ShotSpotter, I don't think that, at least I have not had enough time to fully analyze the, the GVI program or its pros and cons compared to ShotSpotter, et cetera.
Okay.
I have a comment also. Now, there could be certainly integration of different programs and policies and everything. We, we're already doing that. I mean, GVI is one way I'm supposed to look at it. ShotSpotter is another tool that could be used for law enforcement. One of the things that I've, I've got an interest in as we're talking about this, we have budget for two things but not three, and then let's stack up the order, how we're gonna, we're gonna roll these things out. I look at the implementation of the different programs. I look at the implementation of the different programs. With ShotSpotter, that was the question I asked, how long does it take to implement it? How long does it take to get up and running? I look at that as a program that may have life-saving results that are demonstrable within a very short period of time. By the time that the sensors are, are in place and calibrated, you, and, and the system is operational, you can get real-life dispatches that are accurate, timely, and 100% of the time. This could actually save lives in a very short period of time. That was the whole reason I reached out to ShotSpotter, to get more information. I'm not gonna be a, a huge proponent necessarily of their company or, or their software, whatever. I don't know that, you know, that it's 100% accurate. I only wanted that that information be provided to the public so we could start a debate and start talking about that kind of stuff. With GVI, I don't know, with all the different social variables, I don't know how you can objectify this at the end of the day. Is it cause, is it effect of economy or other social issues? And, and I don't mean anything derogatory to the people that, you know, proponent this, but golly, it just seems like, this is your brain, this is your brain on drugs. Any questions, or just say no, and maybe we won't have violent crime. I don't think it's that simple. What I'm proposing is a, a project that we really look at that has much more, again, demonstrable success or failure in a short period of time. And we give that a, a fair shake. And I would consider the other program rather than the GVI, in this case. Now, it is something, again, with an integrated approach, I could see different programs working together as different tools of a patchwork to reduce gun violence, or other, other issues that we're dealing with. Knowing that the budget is just a roadmap, and that is something that we can modify, change over time, I, I, I'm concerned about being, putting into a position of we've got three programs, we can fund two, and this is the way it's gonna be, and then we start drawing lines. We don't need to draw lines on this stuff. I think there are some components of the GVI, which I think that were not touched on with ShotSpotter folks, and because I've read some other information, got some other briefing from these guys, when we talk about police, police best practices. Some of the police best practices supported by ShotSpotter are the same kind of stuff that are the community reach-out that the GVI says. So, there's overlap there, it's the same kind of stuff. It just approaches it differently in different areas. But again, from a priority standpoint, when there could be a shot that's fired, and it strikes somebody incapacitating them, and they're laying there, and nobody calls 911, and there's a difference of saving their life, I think this is a real, this other is a real program that is worthy. When we had two shots that went through the high school front window, and there was some time determining where that came from, that's unacceptable, when something like this is otherwise available. When there is a car chase, and somebody is firing at the lead vehicle, and that's going through town, how do you notify the police that that's happening? You can be a, a house along the way that heard a shot, and you call it in, and that dispatch is for that specific location, or two specific locations. But to try to, to address the intelligence that this is a moving battle, if you will, I think that's invaluable information from law enforcement, and the stray bullets that go through those neighborhoods. That's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think that we heard about two options that are both valid, that I think ideally could be partnered together. I think that I would really like to hear our Director weigh in as a person who's managing a department that's already trying to address this, what would be most useful to them. I will say that I think that the two programs are coming at it in completely different ways, and they're not necessarily, it's, it's one is better than the other, but one is, is more of a proactive, trying to change the, the root causes possibly, or to change it in a structural way, whereas the other is coming in afterwards and trying to change it in a catching them sort of way. I, I think that Councilmember Pavan has a really good point about finding someone lying there. And we know that that has happened at least once, where I, I would agree that this, this is an instance where I think that that could help.
One is enough.
I, I don't disagree with that. But I also want to solve the whole problem so that it, it, it really is just one. And so, I, if, if Director Hitt wouldn't mind weighing in.
Yeah, I would like to make some comments. If I had the choice, GVI ranks above ShotSpotter for me. I think Shot, ShotSpotter is, is a luxury, if you have the additional money. Some key things, I think, are considered, that is a reoccurring cost every year. So, as long as we have ShotSpotter, that, that will be in the budget every, every single year for now, approximately $200,000. If I had the choice of an additional $200,000 every year, I would probably look at fire or police personnel, if we're gonna incur that cost every fiscal year. And the coverage, today is the first time I heard Mr. Blackwell presented, you can actually go less than three square miles. I was under the understanding from a presentation we had quite a while back that three square miles was the, was the minimum. The city's about 11 square miles. Even the, the, less than three square miles is not a very big coverage area. I would be willing to guess, I guess, at this point, because I don't have the data. There would be a lot of gunshots outside of that coverage area that we wouldn't get notified through ShotSpotter that, that there was a gunshot. No doubt, there would be several within the coverage area as well. But I, I kind of think, in order to be as effective as possible, your coverage area would need to be greater than three square miles. And the cost, obviously, is going to increase the larger you go. And, and I, I do recall a presentation in the past, too, that chances are your annual cost eventually is gonna increase. It's not gonna stay at $195,000 for the next 10, 20 years, you know. So, what that cost to be, I don't have any idea, but at some point, that, that would be increasing. I don't know if you sign a five-year contract with them, guaranteeing that price stays the same for five years, or how that works. But GVI is, I mean, it is evidence-based, there's a ton of research and data out there on it. And the success that it's showing, it, it is labor-intensive, I'm not gonna dispute that. And it needs to be done the right way for it to be as successful as it can be.
What do we look at for successes with that program? What would we objectively look at to say, this program's working? And how long will that take?
Reduction in the number of shootings, confirmed shootings, the number of victims, identified shooting victims. Those are the two primary, we don't have a homicide rate that is off the charts by any means. I would expect to see some decrease in our homicides. But when you have anywhere from four to six homicides on average, some of those, just looking over the last five years, do involve our known group viol, or group members or violent offenders, some of them do not. But primarily, the reduction in, in shootings. And that's one of the main premises of the program, is to reduce the number of shootings that occur in the community.
So, with this program, GVI, how long does it take to implement, and before we see objective results?
I don't have the exact answer for you on that, but it, it would take, I would, I would envision a good six months, the initial six months of the program, to get it up and running. Based upon some of the literature I've, I've read, and speaking with the representative from GVI.
Director Hitt, I hear all the time in conversations that I've had at the door about the need to go back to more community policing. I think that having some sort of group violence intervention programming is a step in that direction without maybe having more and more personnel of, of being able to reach out from law enforcement standpoint, being able to reach out to the community, make contact with individuals within the neighborhoods, community leaders, people that can have an effect on crime within their community. I think that this is probably a, a step in that direction. And I'll echo something that Councilwoman Sullivan said, and that I, I think that even, even one shooting, or one individual, you know, being a victim, is, is, is too much. And that's why I think trying to go after the problem, instead of going after the shots fired, trying to approach the problem by just stopping the shots in the first place, I think is the intent of a proactive program like a GVI, in trying to get to the root of the problem, get to having a conversation around what can, we can do to divert some of these bad actors into better opportunities, whether that means counseling, or wraparound services, or job opportunities, whatever it may be, to prevent them from picking up a gun and firing it within the city limits, I think is worthy of, of funding, and certainly a worthy endeavor for us to undertake as a community of partners from City Council and the Police Department to the different community partners and religious partners that we would have under such a program, so... Any further discussion on that amendment? Kelsey, did you second that? Okay. Thank you for that, Peter. And then you, to the city manager, were you proposing to fund that somehow?
Hopefully. I, like I said before, we came up with what we thought we could afford to put in this, this budget. And the fact that we just approved an additional amount on top of the recommendation for firefighters, I'm not so sure you have enough to pull this off.
Okay. Can I propose then, because I know the hard work that you guys did with the firefighters, and I think that there'll be some opportunities to maybe go outside and pursue some grant dollars and some foundational dollars. I think there are two things that I would move to get to, about 185 grand. And then, should we go out and raise that money back in, the, that money can be reallocated, and maybe some of those programs are stored. One would be page 52 of our budget. Under the capital outlay, part of the general fund for City Hall and Grounds, the 85 grand for the locker rooms. And then, the second part, because I do think that we can raise money for this, but I want, do want to make sure that it gets funded this cycle. The general fund expenditure in economic development for the 100 grand proposed there. Would we be able to reallocate that to a gun violence intervention program?
No.
And then, as we raise money back to it?
You couldn't legally do that. The capital improvement funds cannot be used for this purpose, and the money that's driving economic development is water sewer funds and the enterprise fund, and it cannot be used for that either.
Okay.
But I, I do suggest that we could probably do this and raise the difference if, if we had some ideas in how to do that, so...
Or being able to raise the money from foundations?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would try, I mean, it's-
Then we wouldn't need to put it into the budget.
Well, I, you would not, I, I could raise it all with foundations, but I guess, I think the idea is you'd want to put something in the budget, because I feel, I still think there's an ability to fund some of it. I mean, the difference wasn't tremendously huge, it's probably half of the first year's expense.
About half, okay.
They build the pole barn instead of the DPW building. Just saying, save more than $4 million, right there.
Okay, so how much did you propose to be able to fund, if not the whole amount?
Well, I, I haven't calculated it, I could, right now, because I hadn't assumed that there would be a motion to fund without negotiating that difference down on the firefighter, the three firefighters. Knowing that that amount is much higher, I don't have the number in front of me again, but I know that in year two, which would also have a year two offset, you're not gonna budget for that now, but I think in year one, you're probably looking at really not much of a difference, because we are, we're already assumed that'd be a lower amount in the, after the SAFER expires, if, in fact, we get the FEMA extension. If we don't, the motion was made to fund, and I never calculated what the funding would be if the SAFER actually ended in July, that would be a much higher amount. That's what you'd have to raise, the difference between SAFER stopping in July and stopping in October.
Okay.
Did that figure also include equipping them? No.
They already have equipment, correct?
The current three people do.
Okay, well, I will withdraw my motion so that we can work through some of those numbers with the First Amendment, and then walk back through this and allow us to have some further conversations to come back at the next council meeting to amend the budget. Any further amendments?
Yeah, let me just drop one here real quick, how about we get rid of that $88,000 shower?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, is there any discussion?
Where's that? The shower?
Mm-hmm.
Official motion.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's giving the taxpayers quite a bath, you know?
Oh, it's almost nine o'clock before you snuck a pun in.
Just weren't paying attention earlier.
Oh, were there puns?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, hearing non, I'll call for the vote, clerk will tally and display. Motion passes unanimously.
Woo, that's a win.
Any further amendments to the budget? All right. Hearing non, I'll, and as the manager has noted, this can always be amended in the future. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, and the clerk will tally and display. Oh, sorry. I stand corrected. There was, we voted on amendment, but we, I don't think had a motion to adopt the amendment, the budget.
We did not, but I will make it now.
Okay.
Motion to adopt with amendments.
As amended. It's been moved to adopt as a-
And there's- The shower and the firefighters, right?
Yes.
May we ask the Parliament here now, are we doing this exactly correctly?
Again, so, I apologize, I missed that last thing you said, this was a-
So-
It was a resolution.
So, we went through and amended to include the firefighters and the-
Moving the shower.
Locker rooms.
Okay.
And now, we need to take, as amended, we need to take a vote to adopt the budget as amended.
My understanding.
It's been-
Which I moved.
It's been moved.
And it's been supported, right?
Okay, so that was what I understood, what was the, the question beyond that, then, I apologize?
I don't think there was one. Was that, what was your question?
My question was simply, I just want to make sure that-
My question was simply, I just want to make sure that from a parliamentary procedure, we're doing this correctly.
Motion support, discussion, call the question. I see what you mean. Okay, that's what I was asking.
What was the question?
Do we need to adopt our?
I thought 11A, put the budget on the table. When we adopted the original agenda, it put 11A on the table.
I agree.
Yep, to approve the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2019 annual budget. That was amended twice, and now we are back to the main motion, entertaining a main motion, which has been moved by Councilwoman Sullivan to approve the resolution as amended, adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Motion needs a second. Been supported, okay. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if it's most kosher now, but I just did want to make the suggestion in regards to this budget that before next year's budget, we reanalyzed the process that we took to come to this point today. You know, I think there was definitely some opportunities we had where we could have taken more input from our citizens and we didn't. I think it was clearly made over the last several weeks that there was hours of feedback that we received and probably lots more that we missed. And perhaps next year, we start in April, maybe with a series of, a series of more meetings, more geared towards even educating our citizenry to be able to comprehend the budget and then continue in May with the special meetings. No formal motion on that comment, but I figured it was kosher for this topic. I think that's something we need to consider before we go into next year's budget cycle.
Agreed.
Absolutely, I think, I think that sentiment is probably echoed by the rest of us here too. And someone did, I think it was maybe Barb, that brought up kind of a participatory budget process. I think probably extending that back even before May, because I know, or before April, because I know a lot of our department heads are asked to submit budgets up to the city manager in January, February-ish, and then they go to the city manager and then he compiles all of it and works with the finance department. So I think that process, you know, we can probably leverage some community assets to help support that and some community groups to help support that. And I think that'll probably, one, make it, generate a lot more ideas into the budget and also help people, which I think we struggle with here because it's, you know, we're having internal conversations with city staff and, you know, we're elected to be representatives of the people that we serve, so, you know, we're required to dive deep into this 300-page budget, but it can be hard for others to understand and read into all of this. So I do think that would be good for us to engage on in the coming, probably at the start of next year. So any further comments on the motion to approve the resolution as amended? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote and the clerk will tally and display.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, your statement there, you didn't add the last several words and ordering the tax levy also, correct? Or is that a separate vote? Okay, it's written on here as the same, so I just want to make sure that was your intent.
Your motion was to approve the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2019.
Do you want me to read the entire thing? I'm happy to see.
You like to restate your motion?
I just want to make sure, we're doing all three, as long as we all know it.
That's, they're all included in the resolution, but I can read them for the record if you'd like. I get that.
Go for it.
Move to approve a resolution as amended, adopting the fiscal year 2019-20 annual budget, providing appropriations for various funds except for the CDBG funds, which are adopted separately, amending the current fiscal year 2018 through 19 budget to those amounts projected and ordering a tax levy.
As amended.
Supported by council member. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the vote and the clerk will tally and display. Motion passes unanimously. All right, 11B. Resolution authorizing the levy of a millage in the amount of 1.9996 mils on parcels in the DDA district for fiscal year 2019-2020. The recommendation is to approve a resolution for the Downtown Development Authority levying, or authorizing the levy of a millage in the amount of 1.9996 mils on parcels in the DDA district for fiscal year 1920.
Move to approve for discussion.
It's been moved and supported, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, is it correct that this can only go up to two mils?
If it's not reduced by Headley, yes, correct.
Okay, and is it also correct that this is what in part funds the DDA itself?
It funds almost all their operational budget.
And is it also correct that they asked for this amount for their budget?
That's correct.
Okay.
And by the way, it's renewed like this every year. Council has to approve it and has done so many times in the past.
More so, I wanted to make sure that we were responding to concerns that it wasn't jumping up, that we were meeting the needs of the people that it actually serves and that asked for it to be set at this level.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Clerk will tally and display. Motion passes unanimously. Item C, DDA 2019-2020 fiscal year budget, the recommendation, recommendation is to approve the DDA fiscal year 2019-2020 budget.
Move to approve.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Clerk will tally and display. Motion passes unanimously. Item D, resolution for local government approval of a liquor license for Agma Brewing Company, LLC. Recommendation is to approve a resolution for local government approval using Michigan Liquor Control Commission for form, Agma Brewing Company, LLC, for a new bar permit on their property at 129 East Michigan Ave.
Move to approve.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I believe the folks are in the audience if they want to, is it all right if they say a few words about their endeavor in the fifth ward? Is that?
Are you guys coming along?
Good, excellent. I'll introduce myself. My name's Troy Craft. I'll be the head brewer of Agma Brewing Company. We're located downtown, this way, 129 East Michigan. We're about six to seven months out before opening, hopefully, if all things go well. And we're just here to support Jackson and hope you guys will do the same for us and start planning.
You said six to seven months out from opening?
Yeah, so end of the year is what we're shooting for, but we're going through all the licensing right now with TTB and MLC.
I'm Kevin Craft, project manager. We're here to get everybody's blessing to.
That's how Craft Beer got its name, by the way.
We raised over $50,000 through the community through a crowdfunding campaign, so.
I'm talking about by them, did they give you any mic?
No, absolutely not.
No, they're not.
Hey, I'm Andrew, I'm doing the branding and marketing. We're all passionate guys, so it's cool to be here and see the citizen comments and just to see the devotion on the council too. So, you know, a big part of our brewery, you know, we make beer, but the community is really at the focus. We've done, for the most part, we've been a community space for the last year, and we've done workshops, screen printing workshops, yoga classes, art shows, performances. I think quite a few people here have been in our space, and that was really the goal, is to get people comfortable and to introduce them to us in our beautiful little space we have down there at the end of the road. So we're just excited to be here. We were so excited we came last week, not knowing we weren't on the lineup. So it's cool to talk.
Apologies.
We're good.
Cheers.
That's all we have.
We're good beer lovers. All right, it's been moved and supported. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote and the clerk will tally and display. Motion passes unanimously. Congrats, guys. Good luck. Item 11E, Public Arts Commission for five public art panel locations in the city from June to November of this year. The recommendation is to approve the Public Arts Commission for the placement of five public art panel locations in the city from June to November.
Move to approve.
Support.
Been moved and.
I do have a sixth location if anybody's interested.
Is it your?
Front yard? Interior wall?
The N Wizner?
St. Clair.
That's a serious location, maybe.
Oh.
Refer it to the arts commission.
I was thinking of your garage door, but. Yeah, St. Clair, actually.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Just want to reiterate that this is something the Public Arts Commission has done for the past couple of years. It's been successful, it's generated a lot of participation, right in the neighborhoods, anybody can join in. In fact, we usually even leave out some art supplies, so occasionally you can not even have to bring your own and just show up and make your mark. So it's a great, it's a great community building thing that doesn't cost you money.
Okay, sorry, it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Clerk will tally and display. Passes unanimously onto item F. So this comes out of a couple of conversations I've had with council members about some of the processes that we can update surrounding transparency and our open data ordinance and the portal that we've created. Passed out a resolution here. The meat of it gets into the resolves at the bottom with some of the things that actually Councilwoman Sullivan and I talked about and wanted to include in here and bring up for council consideration, we thought, instead of just making a bunch of different motions, that we could put it in the form of a resolution. So I'll focus on kind of the action items coming out of the resolution. The first is to get back to conducting an annual performance review of the appointed officials for Jackson prior to the approval of the city budget. The second is to direct the city manager, and I know that it's within the budget, but I think given that we have an open data portal, that information could be in a spreadsheet form for the listing of the annual salaries for full-time city employees onto the open data portal. And then I think part of what I, we were talking about, what we'd like to see is a way by which we can have the open data portal continually, the open data that's on that, on the website continually expanded and updated. And we thought that that might be a good function and role for the Human Relations Commission to play in kind of serving as the liaison between the city council and the citizens and kind of operating in that sort of a space. So one of the resolves directs them to kind of take on that responsibility, to review the data sets that are on there, engage with other citizens about what other data sets should be produced for the open data portal, reviewing them to make sure that the metadata to describe what is being posted on there is intelligible. I was just on there earlier today in checking out some of the engineering documents, and it is, even as being someone who sits on the city council, it is kind of hard to understand what you're looking at, so with some of the columns. So I think having that information and the metadata that kind of explains that information that you're looking at and what it means on there, having the Human Relations Commission consider that and ways that they can communicate that information, or that information can be explained to the public, indicate the frequency of the data. I know some of that stuff just updates on a maybe yearly basis or semi-yearly basis. And then finally, we thought that kind of having the commission deliver a report back to the city council on its findings, along with the recommendations to provide further transparency onto that portal with, by the September, the first meeting in September, would be enough time for them to make those considerations, gather input from the citizens, and then work with the city to figure out what information can be displayed and how we can display it. So Councilwoman, I don't know if you had any further?
I just, you know, I think that this is about accessibility as much as it is about transparency. A lot of this information exists publicly, but it isn't very accessible. It's not easy to digest. I know having the correct programs to be able to download some of these spreadsheets and then the understanding of programs that you can import them to, if you're lucky enough to even have them or have a free version of them, and then manipulate that data so that it's understandable, is way outside of the realm of what we can expect for your average citizen. And you should be able to get this information in a way that is already ready for you to consume. So I think this is an attempt to make sure that we're reaching out to you and seeing what you want to see on here, that we're putting it in a way that you can access it easily and conveniently, and that we're updating it regularly. So we're attempting to get the ball rolling on updating an already good tool that can be much better.
So I would.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions on this.
Sure, let me just offer that as a resolution, as a motion to approve the resolution.
Support.
For discussion, okay. Councilmember?
One, I'm very familiar with the Human Relations Commissions, they do, commission, they do great work here in the city. I'm wondering how it is that you picked them for this task? I'm not sure how many people on that commission have any degrees in computer science, have any background in IT. You talk about manipulating the data. I've seen some of the data sets that come out of engineering. I personally have a career in IT, and it takes me a few weeks or a few hours at least to manipulate that from the raw data into an easy to consume, an easy to consume source that could be then published as you just described. So how are we expecting the HRC with what experience to be able to do this IT task? Secondly, Mr. Mayor, when you first began to introduce this, you said that by having the HRC do it, they can go ahead and post this information onto the site, but our HRC doesn't actually have access to the city data. So again, that would fall back into the issue with the open data portal. I mean, I think it was, I'm not sure where it came from, where the idea came up, but five, six, seven years ago, I think the city spent $40,000, $50,000 on the open data portal, and it's not updated, simply because it's an employee cost. The only people that have the data that could update it are our employees. The only people that have the data that could update it are our employees. So, either A, we're going to task our employees with spending another, another hour for every eight they spend, you know, increasing forty percent, or excuse me, twelve percent of their workload to be constantly updating the data, or it goes into disuse as it has. So, if we're not budgeting the employee cost to actually provide this data, we're not budgeting any cost for the expertise to actually take the data in its raw form and actually get it ready and easy to consume, I mean, if we're not actually budgeting anything to actually do what you say this is going to do, I don't see how this actually does what you say it would do.
Sure.
So...
Go ahead.
First off, I don't think, I mean, I, I actually think it's great that they don't have an IT background because they're going to approach it the way an average citizen is, right? So, they're going to see all the deficiencies in terms of accessibility.
But who's going to fix them?
So, I'm getting there. This is not a directive for them to go in and suddenly have all this backdoor access to websites and portals and update information and take on another full-time job career, whatever. That's not the intent here, but every project has to start somewhere. We have to get the ball rolling. So, they're tasked with gathering this information, doing analysis, looking at this as an average citizen and engaging our citizenry in what they want to see, how often they think that these things should be updated, and then they will bring that back to us. And at that point, I think it would be an appropriate time to us, for us to figure out, well, then how do we proceed with this? I also say that a lot of this stuff could be set to upload on its own. That's something that I'd like to look into. It's something that for the past year I've talked to different people about, that there's the potential to do that, but I don't think we're at that point yet, right? We need to see what we, what people want, where we're at, where we want to head, and then we'll have another discussion about how to get there.
I like your thought there. I mean, if the idea of using the HRC as simply as a representative audience just to see what they think of the site, that's definitely, explains that. One of the, perhaps a better first step is since, I mean, the city already spent a lot of money on this open data portal years ago and it hasn't been used, maybe we should start by asking the city staff, why isn't this used? Rather than if we start by asking the HRC, what more do you want to see when we're not already, we're not even delivering what was already promised? Why ask for more things that we haven't done if we don't ask the city staff, well, why haven't we been able to do what was already supposed to be there?
I think that is part of what we're asking the HRC to do. It addresses like the frequency because there's a couple of things on there that haven't been updated in a while, and there's a couple of things that have been updated recently. So, what's the difference between updates? Is that data available only so often or was, did we lose a person in a department that was the only one that was capable? That's all part of the scope. I mean, I, I don't think that we have to get so narrow in envisioning this that we're preventing it from actually doing what it's set out to accomplish.
I'm simply thinking, and according with the same cloud of process procedure we've done on a few other items, let's reference the staff first. Out of this, and I did take the time to read it, there's five different resolved lines. I absolutely agree with the intent of number one. I think that is something we absolutely need to do for transparency. It is to conduct annual reviews of our appointed officials. I think that is something that we can do separately. Even with that, you mentioned here, it's, reads quote unquote, resolve, city council, conduct annual performance review of appointed officials in the city of Jackson prior to the approval of the city budget. I don't know if it's necessarily best in that way. I'd be happy to ask staff to do some research, see perhaps if there's other ways other cities do performance reviews. However it gets done, we, I feel as a council, we absolutely need to, to do that. As far as the other four resolved, I mean, it focuses on, you know, number two directs city manager to post an update on the open data portal, those listings. Are we asking them just to post this one thing? Is this an ongoing thing? Again, why not we just ask the city staff, hey, why aren't we posting onto the open data portal first and then see how much more we can do? While we, so I would suggest we hold this off, asking for the city staff to advise on it, but then separately, I would suggest that we take immediate action on the number one thing and let's just do the instituted process for beginning the reviews of the appointed officials.
Sure. So, I, I think the, through the budget process and through the various public comments that we've had, you know, we, we try to be responsive to, to public comment, to different considerations and, and being that a lot of the, and some of it may be hard to find if, if you're not familiar with where to look in a budget, you know, it's, every department is identified by the budget activity and the personnel schedule in terms of salaries and wages per employee, but, so I don't think it's that hard to be able to ask for that information just to be in an Excel form on the open data portal, especially since we've had a number of people request it. So, I don't, I don't see any major heartburn over that. And then the rest of it is asking the HRC to, to move forward with kind of investigating what to be, what to be put on there and kind of be the commission that's tasked with keeping our open data updated and then engaging with the public in terms of what data sets that they actually want to see.
The HRC can't be the ones that update it because they don't have access.
Right.
If our first move in a step towards improving the flow of information, transparency and accessibility is to immediately put it behind closed doors with city staff and cut out the portion that involves giving citizen input, then we're, we're doing a disservice and we're not setting out, we're not doing at all what we're setting out to achieve here.
I, I, I think the, the difference here is that the very fact that we have this open data portal implies that we have open data. But anyone that's looked at it, we don't have any data in the last couple of years on there. There's not much there. I think it's more of a, something to say we did than something that actually does something. Rather, before we task the HRC with, you know, to say, hey, why don't you go out and see how much more we can do, why don't we fix the problem? Why aren't we doing what we already said we were going to do?
I think that's exactly what we're asking them to do.
To tell us the problem we already know we have, that it's not updated?
Valuate the problem and recommend steps.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
No further comment, but if this does get voted down, and I, I would hope it does, I think this is a very long-winded way to just do the one thing I think we need to do, and that's begin the process to create annual performance reviews of the appointed officials. If this vote does fail, I'll definitely be making that motion two seconds later.
Okay. And I, I'm going to be voting in favor of the motion, not only to provide those annual performance reviews, but because I think that oftentimes our boards and commissions are asking what they can do to engage with the citizens, what our priorities are, how they see us interacting, or how they see themselves interacting with us and the work that we do. I think this is a great opportunity for us to clarify that, to engage a board and commission in this work that we do and ask them to participate in helping to improve the transparency here at the city. So, no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, clerk will tally in display. Motion passes six to one. All right. We're on to item G, traffic study.
This has been an ongoing issue in the sixth ward. It's something I've reached out to the police in the past about and to engineering as well. We just have an issue because there are three schools along Wisner within a very short amount of time. There's not a lot of great signage and we have a lot of people driving very fast down Wisner.
We have extra potholes in the fourth ward we could send over your line.
We actually have quite a lot of potholes in Wisner and what makes it even more dangerous is, and on Elmwood as well, is that you have people swerving around those potholes while they're speeding in a school area. So, between what was three schools and is temporarily two. So, I would like to take a look at that intersection. I would like to direct the city to perform a traffic study there with the consideration of possibly putting a stop sign at Elmwood and Wisner.
Wood?
Elmwood and Wisner.
I see machine guns installed there.
They're all funded to place that road. I'm all for it.
Been moved to conduct a traffic study at Elmwood and Wisner.
Support.
And supported. Any further discussion? Hearing no, I'll call for the vote, clerk will tally in display. Motion passes unanimously. Need a motion to move into executive session.
Been moved. Support.
Been moved and supported. Call for the vote. Clerk will tally and display. Councilmember Alexander. Councilmember Alexander. Motion passes unanimously. We're in executive session.
Of course, if we moved any potholes over from fourth ward to sixth ward, there's probably some sort of...
Of course, if we moved any potholes over from fourth ward to sixth ward, there's probably some sort of...
Colleen voted already.
All right, need a motion to return to...
Support.
Moved and supported, a call for the vote, Clerk Italian in display. In open session. Is there any, we had 12B, was there any action on 12B? No, okay. Then we will move on to city council member comments. Start with Colleen Sullivan. Thank you.
So I'd just like to say I am very happy that we have made gains in staffing for the fire department. I think this is a positive step. I think that the work that is ahead is going to be really important for us as a city in terms of determining what the future of firefighting looks like here. And I look forward to working jointly with folks on that issue. I also really appreciate the presentations that happened tonight and the people that asked those people here. And I do hope that we will make more progress on the issue of gun violence in this city in the days to come. That's it for now.
Councilmember Heck.
Yeah, thanks. I would just like to echo Councilmember Sullivan's comments about the two presentations that we had tonight on gun violence. I think it's really important that we're, that we're working on that and that we actually can get something done. So I look forward to continuing that conversation. Hopefully we'll be able to make something happen with that. I, yeah.
Councilmember Pepin.
Thank you, Neil.
Councilmember Alexander.
No comma.
Alexander. Councilmember Dancy.
Not any.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yeah, I just want to say that the gun violence, that shot spotter, are things that I'm really interested in and hope that we can get those set in, maybe through amendments or whatever we have to do later on. Fortunately, I've had two shootings in my area, one being a homicide. And it's kind of saddened that we're still in the month of May and we've had two incidents within a couple of days of each other. So that's important to me. I know it's important to us all, but I'm just saying that, you know, I'm already got things going on and it's sad. You've got both sides of the family. Unfortunately, someone lost a child and the other ones will probably go to prison forever. So, you know, it's just sad and we've got to do something to stop the violence. And I think we as a city need to play a part of that some way. We'll fit it in the budget some way if we can. Some amendments would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I'll simply echo that. And I know it's been a big priority for a lot of areas of the city, in particular in the first ward. So I look to, forward to working on some solutions to find some funding and explore some conversations with some of their community members in collaboration with the city administration in the coming weeks. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comment?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to adjourn is in order.
Support, or so moved.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.